Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Burbank Planning Board, Monday, May 22, 2023. I'm going to call this meeting at order at 6:01. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during general public comment period may provide the Planning Commission oral communication on any matter concerning city business. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone calling the general public hotline during the public comment period. If you would like to participate in public comment period by making an in-person comment, please participate and present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by telephone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. Tonight, we will have our invocation given by Board Member Monaco, and I'll lead us in our flag salute. If you'd please stand.
Real quick, once upon a time, there was a very wealthy man who was upset at the way people were treating each other. He went to the road and he lifted up a rock and he put a bag of gold under it and left the rock in the middle of the road. One traveler walked down, said, "This is ridiculous. I have to go around this rock. Why should I have to do this?" And he did so. The second traveler came down the road and said, "Oh, this stupid rock is in the road. They should do something about this." Later on in the evening, a young man was returning back from his shepherding duty. And he saw the rock in the road and he said, "This is dangerous." He moved the rock and found a bag of gold. And the point is, is that this board's point, the importance of this board is not to complain, but to correct. We need to see things, find answers, and move on to the next.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get the roll call, please?
Chair Rosati.
I am here.
Vice Chair Atakanyan.
Present.
Commissioner Monaco.
Here.
Commissioner Elrich.
Present.
And Commissioner Wick.
Present.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from staff announcements?
No announcements.
Great. There are two items on tonight's agenda. Now is the time to place for the first public hearing item on project number 22-0004082, a conditional use permit to allow the incidental sale of beer and wine and distilled spirits for an onsite consumption at the existing restaurant, The Young Fella, located on Riverside Drive 4007. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
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 Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral with the person about this project?
No.
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 Mr. Ramirez have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
And are there any written communications on this matter?
Staff has not received any unless they were sent to the commissions by themselves.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department, please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Um, yes. Can we start the PowerPoint? Good evening, Chair Rosati and members of the Commission. My name is Fatima Benitez, Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department Planning Division. For your consideration tonight is project number 220004082, a conditional use permit request for an alcohol license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for an existing restaurant, The Young Fella, located at 4007 Riverside Drive. The project representative is Veronica Basera on behalf of the restaurant owner, Bahar Parspar. The alcohol CUP request is to allow the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumption with an alcohol beverage and control, ABC, type 47 alcohol license. Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1116.3 requires that restaurants with the incidental sale and consumption of alcohol that are within 150 feet of a residential zone must obtain Planning Commission approval of a CUP. The site is located next to a residential zone that is within the 150-foot buffer zone and is therefore subject to a CUP approval. Additionally, the applicant is proposing minor interior alterations to add one restroom. No exterior improvements are being proposed. Currently, the project site is improved with an existing restaurant use that allows onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine under ABC type 41 alcohol license. The existing restaurant has an existing outdoor patio area. The project site is located at 4007 Riverside Drive, highlighted in yellow on the aerial photograph. The 2,800-square-foot parcel is located between Paz Avenue and Maple Street. The project site is located within the Media District General Business Zone, MDC3. The site is surrounded by media-related office use to the north and retail professional services and restaurant uses to the east, west, and south. Shown here is an existing site plan of the project site. The building includes two tenant spaces, and both are restaurants, The Young Fella and Lou the French on the Block. The main entrance is facing Riverside Drive where the blue arrow is pointing. The yellow line depicts the property lines. The project site has one standard parking space and one ADA compliance space, totaling two onsite parking spaces for this establishment. This slide provides an overview of the proposed floor plan. The entrance to the restaurant is fronting Riverside Drive and is indicated by red arrow as shown on the slide. The dining area and service area where the food and alcohol would be served is indicated in yellow. The kitchen area is shown in orange, and the office and storage area is shown in pink. The applicant is proposing minor alterations to the interior to add one restroom, which is outlined in green. The storage of alcohol is restricted to the area outlined in purple, which includes rear storage space and the beer dispenser located towards the front of the restaurant. Per Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1116, not more than 15% of the floor area of such establishment can be devoted to the sale or consumption of alcohol. The total area devoted towards storage of alcohol is 19.66 square feet of the overall 1,475 square-foot tenant space, which is below the maximum 15% allowed. No other changes are being proposed or permitted. Shown here are two photos showing the front entrance of the existing restaurant and the existing two parking spaces located towards the rear. As mentioned before, the existing restaurant has an existing outdoor patio area within the public right-of-way. Per Section 10-1-502 and 10-1-1116 of Burbank Municipal Code, onsite sale and consumption of alcohol as an incidental use to a restaurant is allowed through approval of a CUP in the Media District General Business Zone. The CUP request is compatible to the existing neighborhood character and to the other surrounding commercial uses, which are made up of restaurant and various retail uses. The alcohol sale would be incidental to the primary restaurant use. The application proposes only minor interior alteration and no external improvements to the building or surface parking lot. The project is, I'm sorry. Yes. The project is improved with a restaurant use that serves the neighborhood residential uses located towards south and east of Riverside Drive and non-residential uses, including media-related office use towards the north of the project site that is consistent with land use element goal 1, Policy 1.1, to accommodate a mix of residential and non-residential land uses in appropriate locations. The existing use on the project site and the proposed request for incineratory alcohol cells will support the goals of underlying Media District Commercial General Plan land use designation, consistent with land use element goal 1, Policy 1.8. Additionally, the proposed request would enable the existing restaurant to remain competitive and maintain its economic viability by enhancing the service it provides to the surrounding community, thereby preserving existing mom-and-pop business in the neighborhood consistent with land use element goal 6, Policy 6.4. Further, staff did not receive any public comments for the proposed request. In order to address any potential negative impacts, staff incorporated several conditions of approval into the resolution. The existing hours of operation are from Monday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The applicant is proposing to extend the hours of operation from Monday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. or midnight. The applicant initially proposed to extend the hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. beyond midnight hour, which is also subject to approval of a CUP. However, in order to be consistent with the neighboring restaurant uses and due to proximity to residential neighborhood, staff recommended to limit the hours of operation until midnight, which is what is being proposed tonight. A condition of approval has been placed to limit the hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., a.m., midnight, Monday through Sunday, and the last call for alcohol sales within the outdoor patio will be at 9:30 p.m. and 11:30 p.m. inside the restaurant. In addition, conditions have been placed to ensure that at least 65% of the gross sales revenue of the establishment must be from food sales. No more than 15% of the gross floor area be devoted primarily to the sale or consumption of alcohol, and limiting alcohol sales during the same business hours when food is being sold. Further, no bar area is being proposed. Therefore, staff can recommend the following. Adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Burbank approving project number 220004082, a request for a conditional use permit allowing the incidental sale of alcohol, of sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant located at 4007 Riverside Drive, based on the findings of fact and subject to the attached, to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I now invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board. You'll have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you very much. My name is Veronica Basera, and thank you, Fatima. That was an excellent presentation for this project. The applicant has been at this location for several years and has managed somehow to get through COVID, but she's seen a change in the neighborhood where there's less lunch crowd and more dinner crowd. So she'd like to be able to provide a dinner menu that is a little bit more elaborate than what she's had in the past, and with that also offer a sort of specialty alcohol drinks that would require a 47. Instead of just beer and wine, she would need this 47 in order to provide these specialty drinks that she's planning on making. In the area, there are other restaurants that are providing that service. She believes that this will help her be competitive in the area and stay in business and be able to maintain her business for many more years to come. Like I said, she's been there for many years and has never had a problem there. So she's sort of a staple in the area. I have any questions?
We will have a question and answer period. So are you done with your presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you so much. We will now open up the, the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the planning board. Callers will be placed in a queue until all persons' in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as it may take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer and take the phone off speaker when you deliver your comment. Madam Clark, do we have any speakers here tonight or callers on the phone?
No callers or speakers.
Okay. I see one coming.
So forgive me, guys. My name is Kyle, and it's a pleasure to be here, Commission, Planning Commission. So I'm not sure if I'm supposed to directly comment on that planning deal, but I just want to introduce myself. I applied for one of your open vacancies. And so I just, it's just purely an introduction to say hello and thank you for your time. That's it.
Okay. So I guess that's fine. This is public comment period just for this specific item. We do have a general public comment period for what you just wanted to do, but that's fine.
Yeah, I believe the gentleman was here at the last council meeting.
I can't hear you.
Excuse me. The gentleman was at the last council meeting and commented similarly that he's applying for the planning.
Oh, for the planning. I got it. Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I can reapproach. Forgive me. That was abrupt.
Come on up.
Yeah, okay.
It'll save you time because then you don't have to wait till the public comment period.
Okay. Well, forgive me, guys. So once again, my name is Kyle. I live at 2720 West Victory Boulevard, getting ready to move under the underpass of the Five over by the Tommy's Burger. So I'm excited to do that. I've been living in Burbank for two and a half years, and I don't see myself going anywhere anytime soon. And I want to get more involved with the community. So I've applied to the Goals Committee, also the Parks and Rec, and then, yeah, Planning Committee. So again, I'm excited to grow with you guys, and I hope you will consider me as one of your contemporaries once the application process is complete. And thank you for your time, Mr. Rosati, and the rest of you. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your willingness to serve. Any other public comment? Any other phone calls?
No callers or speakers.
Thank you. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
No further comments.
And does the applicant or the representative wish to make any further comments? That's a no from the seats. Thank you. Does the planning board have any questions for the applicant? Come on up, please, Ms. Wick, and then we'll go with Mr. Monaco.
Just two-part question, just for clarity for members of the public. The restaurant's called the Aloud Chop Shop right now, or, or is it Young Fella's?
It's going to be The Young Fella's. So she's changing the name to Young Fella.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so currently, it's the Chip Shop.
The Chip Shop, and, and it's, they're changing the name to The Young Fella's. Just, just out of curiosity, why the name change? Just rebranding or?
Rebranding, trying to increase her business and trying to do better. It's been a very tough road through COVID and coming back up again. So she's just going to try to get it, get it restarted.
Sure. Just curiosity. Thank you.
Mr. Monaco?
Just informational question, really. On the floor plan, there's no, it's all a service bar, right? It's not, there's no sitting at a bar, having a drink?
That's correct. There's no bar in there. This is a full-on sit-down restaurant that will be serviced by a waiter.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry. Oh, when does the kitchen close?
The kitchen will most likely close at 11 o'clock.
Oh, okay. No, I was just curious because it runs to 12.
Yeah.
That's it. That's my only question.
The applicant chose not to come?
The applicant was supposed to be here. She is in Westwood at another location. She was going to try to make it. She had to pick up her kids, and so she was, said, "I'm not sure I'm going to make it."
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant, Mr. Atakanyan?
If I understood correctly, there's going to be an addition, a bathroom. Is that correct?
She's already installed the second bathroom.
Oh, she's already done that.
She's already installed the second bathroom.
Because I wanted to find out if that was contingent on getting approval here or not, but she's already done it.
She's already done it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any, thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Atakanyan?
One question. Are the hours that are being proposed consistent with the other restaurants in the area?
Yes, the hours, the hours of operation that are being proposed are consistent with the neighbor, neighboring restaurants that are located on Riverside Drive.
All right. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Seeing, I just had one question. Where is the, the residence? Is it above somewhere? It's, I know it's, it's close to residential. Are we talking across the street? Are we talking above somewhere?
Uh, yes. So the restaurant is adjacent to the MDR4 Zone, which is a multifamily residential zone. Currently, it's just zone residential, but right now, there's currently a, a surface parking lot along with office-related, um, media-related offices, even though it's zoned multifamily.
Where, where is that?
It's, can we show the floor plan or the?
I'll pull, I'm going to pull it up.
The zone. So at the top, you can see MDR4. That is multifamily residential. It's zoned multifamily, but currently, there's an existing surface parking lot and an office-related.
Okay, and that's what's triggering.
Yes, correct.
Okay. I was trying to figure out where the residential was, and it was, okay, got it. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, I now declare the public hearing closed, and the Planning Commission will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion if, unless anybody wants to deliberate.
So we'll make a motion. We'll get a second, and then we'll deliberate.
Okay. I move that the planning board approve project number 22-0004082 request for a conditional use permit to allow the incidental sale of beer, wine, wine and distilled spirits at 4007 Riverside Drive, The Young Fella.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a first and a second. Any comments? Seeing none, will you pull us, please?
Chair Rosati.
Yes.
Vice Chair Atakanyan.
Yes.
Commissioner Monaco.
Yes.
Commissioner Elrich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wick.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Moving on to item number two, now is the time and place for the second public hearing item, which is continuation of the April 10th, 2023 public hearing, project number 23-0001387 for proposed zone text amendment to the city's zoning regulation to Burbank Municipal Code 1-502 and 10-1-1608 and 10-1-101609 related to the zone regulations for the conversion of existing businesses with drive-throughs to the prohibition of residentially adjacent restaurants with drive-throughs, requirement of conditional use permit to operate an establishment with a drive-through, change the minimum stacking distance requirements, and establishment of hours of operation. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
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 Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with any person regarding this project?
No.
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 No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
And are there any written communications on this matter?
Uh, we have not received any written communications. And just to clarify the noticing, so it was posted on the agenda as required under the law, but remember, this was a continued item from date-specific to tonight. So I just want to make sure the public wasn't expecting a whole new noticing requirement as part of that, which is not required by.
Yes, because it was a continuation. Yes, sir. Will the representative of the Community Development Department, please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chairman Rosati, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Joseph Onyabuchi, Associate Planner with the Planning Division, Community Development Department. May I please have the presentation? Tonight's hearing is a continuation of the April 10th, 2023 public hearing in which the Planning Commission will be considering a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Burbank recommending the city adopt an ordinance of the city council for a zone text amendment to amend Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-502, 10-1-1608, and 10-1-1609. The proposed amendments to Burbank Municipal Code Sections 10-1-502, 10-1-1608, and 10-1-1609 are related to the zoning regulations for the conversion of existing businesses with drive-throughs, the prohibition of residentially adjacent restaurants with drive-through, requirement of a conditional use permit to operate an establishment with drive-through, change the minimum stacking distance requirements, and establish the hours of operation. During that meeting, Planning Commission members expressed a desire to understand possible community benefits associated with drive-through establishments and stated that they wanted additional public outreach to be conducted prior to making a formal decision on the project. Staff consulted the Economic Development Division of the Community Development Department and found that drive-through business can be desirable development opportunities for property owners. Staff also found that drive-through business may have a positive impact on the local economy because they provide no-contact services, which have become increasingly popular since the start of the COVID pandemic. In addition, existing businesses or new business developments of this type that include new construction or tenant improvement work can add to new city revenues in the form of building permits, sales tax, and property tax for upgraded facilities and lots. It is important to note that staff's research also revealed other emerging trends in the restaurant industry, such as mobile ordering solutions, which allow patrons to order food off-site from their mobile phone and pick up that food at a designated time without having to wait in a drive-through queuing lane. These innovations have, have the potential to compete because they would require less wait time for the patron and may require a smaller footprint for the restaurant. The potential negative impacts associated with drive-through establishments, such as vehicle, vehicle queuing spill-over into residential streets, excessive noise, litter, loitering, and increased vehicular traffic, still apply. Staff identified the affected property and business owners, and as directed, sent notices of the community meeting to each identified property and business owner. Staff then, then held a virtual community meeting to discuss the preparation of a ZTA concerning drive-through establishments throughout the city. The community meeting was held on May 3rd, 2023, and four members of the community attended the meeting. Staff received two questions, one related to entitlement processing of a conditional use permit, and another about the availability of draft ZTA materials for public review. No meeting attendees voiced any concern with the proposed ZTA changes, and staff did not receive any feedback during or after the community meeting that sought to change the proposed ZTA. Based on council feedback, community input, and concerns in staff research, staff recommends that several modifications to the Burbank Municipal Code be made. A complete exhibit of the proposed changes to the existing ordinance are included as Exhibit B to the staff report. Staff recommends modifying the use table to indicate that residentially adjacent restaurants with drive-through uses are prohibited. Residentially adjacent is defined in Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-203 as any commercially or industrially zoned property located within 150 feet of any residentially zoned property, measured at the two properties' closest points. Additionally, staff recommends modifying the use table to clarify that drive-through establishments are permitted only with approval of a CUP in designated zones. The inclusion of this modification will ensure that drive-through establishments exclusive of restaurants with drive-through are subject to discretionary approval as well. Burbank Municipal Code Sections 10-1-1608 and 10-1-1609 create a distinction between drive-through restaurants and residentially adjacent drive-through establishments, even though the development standards listed are very similar. However, staff recommends the deletion of the text in 10-1-1608 as currently written and proposes replacement text. Staff proposes a new heading entitled "Drive-Thru Establishments" to address drive-through restaurants as well as other drive-through establishments, such as drive-through retailers, pharmacies, or banks. Staff recommends the deletion of the text for Section 10-1-1609 in its entirety. Staff recommends the deletion of the text for Section ten dash one dash sixteen-oh-nine in its entirety. Staff proposes replacement text as seen on this and the following slides. Staff proposes that residentially adjacent restaurants with drive-throughs are prohibited, and that any legal non-conforming drive-through establishment that ceases operation for any reason for a period of ninety days is subject to the Section ten dash one dash eighteen-oh-nine-point-three and eighteen-oh-nine-point-four, which govern non-conforming land and uses. As mentioned earlier, staff proposes that a C U P is required to operate any drive-through establishment. As part of the C U P application, a queuing lane analysis will be required. Staff proposes a minimum three-hundred-foot queuing lane that is separate from the circulation routes and aisles necessary to access and exit the site. An applicant can request the director consider the reduction to the queuing lane with the submission of a queuing lane analysis. However, the reduction can be no less than two-hundred-and-twenty feet. Staff proposes that hours of operation are limited to six A M. to ten P M., unless otherwise approved as part of a C U P. Finally, staff proposes that every project is subject to the underlying development standards applicable to the proposed use contained in Articles eleven through sixteen. With the proposed amendments, staff believes this zoning text amendment will support the vision of single-family and multiple-family residential zones, as well as commercial corridors throughout the city by ensuring their character is protected and maintained with the requirement of C U P approval. If the planning commission recommends a resolution adopting the zone text amendment, the Z T A will be presented to the city council for a first reading to be scheduled on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, and a second reading thereafter at city council to be scheduled. The proposed Z T A is exempt from review under SEQA pursuant to California Code of Regulation Section one-five-zero-six-one-B-three, as it will have no impact on the environment, as well as Section one-five-three-seven-eight-A-one, as this Z T A is not considered a project subject to the requirements of SEQA. Therefore, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance of the city council of the City of Burbank, amending Title Ten, Chapter One of the Burbank Municipal Code to update the development standards for the conversion of existing businesses with drive-throughs, the prohibition of residentially adjacent restaurants with drive-through, requirement to obtain a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through establishment, changes to the minimum stacking distance requirements, and limitation of hours of operation for establishments with drive-through. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will now open the meeting to hear from any person who wishes to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for an maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to speak on this comment, on this, wish to speak in person, may please present the completed speaker card to the planning division staff. If you wish to speak by phone, eight-one-eight-two-three-eight-three-three-three-five to address the planning board. Callers will be placed in a queue until all persons' comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we get the first few callers through. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer, and take the phone off speaker when you deliver your comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers tonight on this matter?
No callers or speakers.
Okay, let's give it a minute. There being no further public comment on this matter, I now declare the public comment period closed. Does the board have any questions for staff regarding this topic? Ms. Wick?
Two questions. So with the hours of, I believe it was six A M. to ten P M., anything that's existing would just be converted to legal non-conforming? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Okay. And then as far as noticing, because I understand that that was a big issue during the last meeting, all property owners have been noticed about this hearing, and all tenants have been noticed?
They were noticed as directed by, uh, the commission, uh, on the April tenth meeting, and we also tried to email everyone as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Monica?
Um, I'm just, I guess these are just, uh, like a general point, because I don't know how really you you'd be able to address it right now, but I also know that now, in addition to a lot of the other things that are happening with drive-ins, they have set aside space for pickup. Does that affect? I guess, how do I say this? When there's a decision being made as to how many spots there are versus what they think they're gonna stack? I'm sorry, I'm getting a little, what effect do you think the designated parking spots for pickup may have on the overall parking scenario or, um, stacking? Has any thought on?
Well, what I'll say-
I'm struggling to try to come up with it.
I understand. Uh, what I can say is that, uh, in the code, the parking spaces are, the required parking spaces are tied to the, um, the gross floor area of the structure. So, uh, what we've seen, I think what the research has shown, um, is that there has been sort of a decrease in the um, gross floor area that a lot of these restaurant uses are requiring because they're able to use these drive-through, um, facilities. So I can't speak to what the effect would be as to these, um, these parking spaces in relation to whatever the queuing lane would be, um, but I, I can say that, um, you know, the, the general floor area has been reducing in size as, you know, more sort of, um, in-person pickup opportunities are sort of, are phasing out.
That's great. I'm glad you, you know, that was put into the mix as a part of the thought process. And then I guess the other thing is, what happens? We put the restaurant in, and this restaurant turns into a Shake Shack, and now you have lines going all the way, you know, a mile down the road. Is there any recourse we have to correct that? In other words, go back to the property owner and say, look, you can't do this anymore. You know, it's really jamming traffic up beyond what our minimum requirements were.
Sure. Uh, well, I think what this, uh, proposed Z T A is trying to accomplish is to be a bit proactive, um, with regard to these kind of Shake Shack or, you know, uh, raising cane situations.
Just use a throw name out.
No, for sure. I understand. Not, they're a great company. Um, but what I mean is that, uh, I think, you know, what we are gonna require is a queuing lane analysis with, as part of the C U P. And so we'd hope that the queuing lane analysis would, would be able to project what the traffic impact would be to the surrounding neighborhood, um, or the residential neighborhood specifically. And so the, the hope is that these, you know, the C U P and the public input would be able to, um, or more specifically, the queuing lane analysis would be able to, um, predict some of these behaviors.
And just one final, uh, I guess, comment question. When they usually have those big back, you know, the lining up, and there's a s, street right in the middle, is there gonna be some provision, we say, for, or a sign, or a note, or anything that would say, don't block the intersection?
Well, this, again, this, with this being, uh, with us, with the Z T A proposing C U P requirements, um, this could be a condition of approval that we could add to, uh, any project that comes in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Antakonyan?
I wanna lay some foundation so I can perhaps, my, my questions will have some context. The genesis of this entire zone text amendment was when there were, uh, residents who came to voice their concern regarding uh, one establishment that had recently opened and was having, you know, blocking the streets and so forth, raising cane, that's on all. Is that correct?
Uh, I believe that is my understanding, yes, that there's, that was the genesis.
When was the, when, when was, uh, I mean, did staff go out or anyone go out and maybe stay out there for a few days and, and assess and maybe take counts or see what the situation was?
So I, I can chime in. This is, uh, Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director in Planning. So our colleagues in transportation planning have been conducting just that. They've been doing surveys, they've been out there. There's actually a neighborhood protection program that's being implemented around that particular facility. But a lot of the, uh, things that, um, Associate Planner Onyabuchi has noted are that, uh, some of those same conditions that are creating impacts on the neighborhood are persisting. So even with a neighborhood protection plan that includes cul-de-sac-ing streets, a parking permit, we're still having those issues, uh, and that is something that they've been researching. As a matter of fact, I believe in a council item coming up soon is to look at, uh, permit parking and other things in the area.
Okay, thank you. So when was this done, roughly?
Uh, just to clarify, what, when you say this done?
Staff from, staff from Department of Transportation and so forth.
It's been going on for about a year, I believe so.
All right, so is there a recent, uh, update or report on this?
The reports have been given to council, so those are available. I believe they're doing a new report update, uh, to them in the coming weeks, uh, to talk about existing conditions in the streets adjacent to the business in question.
And the reason why I'm asking is because, uh, there's a big difference, uh, from the time that it had just opened to just, you know, the other day when I was, uh, passing by, where it wasn't as congested, even though it was around, you know, lunchtime. Uh, so, but that's just one time.
Unfortunately, uh, the peak hours when we're having, uh, issues of stacking are in the later hours of the evening. Uh, not so much at lunch, but in the later is when you're actually seeing stacking in that area. And I believe transportation planning has reported that to council.
Okay, thank you. Um, I appreciate the bringing in the benefits and the, and the, I guess, uh, the cons of having, uh, a drive-through, but reviewing that, I couldn't help but notice the detriment or the cons are solved by the fact that people could call in orders and just pick it up. So I, I couldn't, I, I just couldn't see the correlation where with advent of new technology that people can, you know, call in and place an order, in addition to perhaps all of these other, uh, services that are out there, like different companies that take the food and deliver, deliver it to you. So I couldn't see the, the, um, the detriment or the cons because of the new technologies that are in, so I, I'm not sure how helpful that was to me, but nevertheless, it's in here. Now, the meeting that was held on May third, who conducted the meeting?
Uh, it was staff that, planning staff that conducted, myself. Uh, I conducted it along with some of my colleagues.
Okay, so you were there at the meeting?
Yes, I, I was.
And it lists here in the report that, uh, only staff answered two questions related to entitlement processing of a conditional use permit and availability of draft zone text amendment materials for public review. Were there any other questions that were asked by the participants?
Those were the only two questions. Uh, the first question specifically was about, uh, how long it would take for the C U P process, um, which we answered, and the second question specifically asked for a Spanish translation of the, uh, Z T A draft materials. And then we asked repeatedly if there are any other comments or questions from, from the, uh, audience, and we didn't receive any.
And did they say why they wanted a copy, the, uh, of the draft zone text amendment?
Uh, no, they did not.
So they did not have a copy to look at, at the time of the meeting?
They, they, they were, I mean, they were a part of the meeting, they, they heard the meeting, and they requested, uh, the Spanish, uh, translation. I believe all of the documents are online from the planning commission.
Perhaps they were, but were they aware that the documents were available online?
Yes, we, we let them know that all of the documents that they, that were available during the meeting were also available online. And we let them know that we have several Spanish speakers, uh, in our, in our office who are more than willing to walk them through, uh, the presentation and, and yet the draft materials if they wanted to give us a call.
Were these property owners or were they, uh, operators?
Uh, we did not ask, um, we, we didn't ask who, what their identity was, uh, but we answered their questions when they asked.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Um, just refresh my memory. So if I, if I was an owner of a business, I sold it, it closed, what's the, the timeframe for the new business to open and keep the drive-through?
So, uh, is this a residentially adjacent drive-through? Like a residentially adjacent restaurant with drive-through, or is this just a residentially adjacent, um, drive-through, um, facility? Or is this just a drive-through establishment that is elsewhere?
Give me all of it.
So, uh, if you are a residentially adjacent drive-through, um, a, a drive-through, uh, restaurant, and you wanted to sell your property, sell your business, um, you have within ninety days, um, to sell your property into another business without any issue, uh, from staff. Um, however, once those ninety days are done with, uh, that use can no longer be, um, operated on, in that, in that location. That's for residentially adjacent restaurants with drive-through. If you are a residentially adjacent drive-through establishment, uh, you are permitted in that zone if it's, if it's a permitted use in the zone. Um, and, but you would still require a C U P for any sort of expansion or alteration or modification to the site. If you were selling, it would require a C U P for the new, for the new tenant to come in. Um, outside of a residentially adjacent area, if you, uh, say are a resident, if you are a drive-through establishment that's sort of in a commercial corridor or something like that, uh, you would still require, a, a C U P would still be required for any change, um, in operation.
Okay. Mr. Antakonyan?
If, if this is, if this is a, a response to, uh, let's say residents, uh, raising concerns regarding traffic and blockage and so forth and so on, why is there still a requirement if it's, if the establishment is in a commercial corridor where there are no residents around? Why would, why would the same requirements be applied there?
I just wanna clarify. So your question is, why are there still requirements for a C U P if it's, if it's not residentially adjacent?
Correct.
Uh, well, I think this is an opportunity for, uh, staff to, or for public to, um, to have input on these types of uses. Uh, the code as it's currently written does not allow for any public input, um, whether it's residentially adjacent. Um, yeah, it does not allow for this, for, for any public input, so we're trying to, uh, update the code to allow for more public input. And there are traffic concerns as well, um, that this code currently doesn't allow us to, to, um, have input on.
Okay, thank you.
So, so let me give you an example. It's not adjacent residentially, in and out, burger. Horrible, horrible situation over there. So if we had a bite of the apple, are, are we saying that we probably wouldn't do the C U P there? Or we would do something different there? Is that?
Uh, what I'm saying is that if they wanted to modify, expand, um, um, you know, make any alterations to the current, to the current use, to the current building, they would have to be, they would have to go through a C U P process.
So, that's what I'm asking. This would give us a chance to take a, a bite of the apple to fix that issue.
The C U P process would allow us to look at things like queuing, overflow, uh, all those facets would be part of the C U P process.
Yeah. So I think in that instance, it, 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 it's, it's worth doing. I, I think, I think in that instance, I, that's one drive-through that really is not working very well, the layout. And I think if we had another bite of the apple, which this might possibly, if they wanted to expand or do something different, I could see where this, we, we could actually make this work in our favor, so. And it's not residentially adjacent, so. Mr. Antakonyan?
As to the ninety days, when does the ninety days clock start? And I'm, the ninety days that I'm referring to is that the use, I guess, reverts back or, or gets can, when, when does the clock start on that?
Scott Plam, Planning Manager. The ninety-day clock starts when the previous business closed, when it ceased operations per our code.
It, for clarification, what, what is the definition of cease- It, for clarification, what, what is the definition of ceasing operation?
They're no longer open for business.
So regardless whether the place is sold or not, if the place is closed, then the ninety day clock starts.
Starts. They're open for business, not operating. That's correct.
Okay.
On that, I'm sorry.
Good.
On that same um note. I, I'm, I'm very familiar with um non-conforming use properties and changes, not so much in Burbank though. Um, operating property, um, non-conforming use, um, I come in and buy the business. Um, I'm still able to operate under that non-conforming, okay. Now I decide that I wanna radically change this restaurant. Um, and I'm still a legal non-conforming use. I can do that, right? I would have to bring that. Back into planning. I, I guess what I'm saying is, what, what is the way around, is there a way around not having? To. Sorry, I'm not really.
If you're, if you're, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Monaco, so are you asking the question that someone takes over a existing use?
Right.
On a lot, and then uh realizes that they need to expand. The non-conforming use.
Right.
Throughout the lot. They, the code as written in, will refer you to eighteen oh nine, I believe is uh, we reference that section. You can't expand the non-conformity of that.
That's okay, alright, that's what I wanna know. And, but just to go back, the tolling period for. The ninety days is when the business ceases operation.
Yeah, the, the other part that's um, that's being eliminated in this section of the code.
Right.
Is um, since we're using the cane example, uh, is that uh, that was an existing bank that had a drive-through. Uh, we can debate the merits of whether the drive-through was operational or not, but it existed, had the, a service window. And there are provisions in the current code that are being struck out that would remove the exception. To the conversion of that into a restaurant, which was causing much consternation with the community, and that is. That the way that was being determined was based on a calculation that was being done on the amount of square footage that was being removed. And the value associated, and it was being done by the building official. So we're removing that, uh, because there was. Uh, different interpretations of how that should have been done. The best thing to do is either, and that's what we're recommending, is either. The prohibition, or in the case of those other instances on the conversion, when it's not a restaurant that's residentially adjacent. Is that they go through that CUP process that's established in the code.
Alright, so.
Because that other exception was.
Understood.
Was specific for, I think something that was occurring in the late nineties, where uh restaurants were being expanded. But the new model is a contraction of square footage and more space being made available for vehicles to circulate through. And that's the issues that we're currently having is the, the ordinance was not designed to deal with the current state of affairs when it comes to. Restaurant operations.
We're keeping up with the times, that's good.
Uh, we, we created a mouse tap, someone created a better mouse, and now we're trying to update the mousetrap.
Thank you.
Miss Wick.
I'm just gonna ask for the benefit of the public and just so that we're all understanding what we're voting on, just some very. Basic, real life questions, so, and I'm not trying to call out Raising Canes, but. For instance, Raising Canes is open. If they want, let's say they close. They wanna convert to another restaurant within ninety days, that is okay under the proposed amendment.
Yes.
After ninety days, that is not okay, no more.
That use will no longer be permitted.
Got it, and there's no way around that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, something that is, if Raising Canes or any restaurant was not residentially adjacent. That is okay.
They would be permitted, however, they would have to go through a CUP process in order to operate as a restaurant or a drive-through establishment.
Okay, then switching gears to something that's like a pharmacy. So for instance, a CVS that's residentially adjacent, that could convert to another non-restaurant. Within ninety days.
Yes, yes, exactly.
What about after ninety days?
They could still convert.
Okay.
Um, but they would have to go through again the CUP process.
I'd only, I, I caution, I'd put an asterisk next to that. To make sure that the existing drive-through with restaurant is in a zone that either conditionally permits that or permits it by right, so.
Got it, okay.
Then yes, you're.
I'm just asking real world questions.
Very good question.
Kind of like, it helps, like, it helps me understand like a grid almost, like so. And again, I'm not trying to call out different, like particular businesses, I'm just using it as a real world example. So, let's say a CVS wanted to convert to. A fast food restaurant in a residentially adjacent zone, is that permitted at all? Under the.
Not with a drive-through.
Not with a drive-through, but like they could have not a drive-through, so even if. A. A business that was not a restaurant, had a drive-through, a working drive-through. They could not convert it to a restaurant with a drive-through if it's in a hundred and fifty feet of a residence.
Exactly.
What I'm understanding?
Yes.
And then. If there was a business that didn't have a drive-through, that's not, that's like in an airport zone or a commercial zone. If that's a business and they wanted to convert. That to a business with a drive-through, would they be able to, under a conditional use permit?
If they met the requirements of the, the zone that it's in, uh, they would, and they could go through the CUP process, then yes, it would be permitted.
Okay, got it. Thank you for just laying it all out, I appreciate, because I feel like legal non-conforming is a little confusing, so I just wanted to. Get it all on the tape.
Thank you for your question.
And Commissioner Wick, just for the sake of the, of the rest of the commission and the audience, um, exhibit B dash one.
Correct.
Is in here, has the land use tables, all those scenarios you were talking about for the different zones. If it's. One of those particular ones where it's not residentially adjacent, but in one of those zones, then it would be a CUP.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, because people may not have, people may not enjoy watching PowerPoints as much as we do.
Really good question.
Burbank Planning Commission, you know, so I just wanted to, okay.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Mister Otakony.
The three hundred foot queuing, is that a requirement for all across the board, correct? Whether it's residentially adjacent or not, is three hundred foot?
Three hundred feet, yes.
That almost makes it an impossible to do a drive-through. Um.
It, it, it is based on some of the research and the surrounding jurisdictions, and we saw similar, similar um lane, queuing lane requirements, so um.
Well, I'm glad you wrote that up. Can you give me an example?
Sure, uh. One second. So we looked at, so we looked at um Glendale, Pasadena, City of Los Angeles. Uh, Santa Clarita, Long Beach, Marin County, Santa Barbara. Um, so Santa Clarita has a requirement no less than two hundred feet. Um, let's see. Glendale, sorry.
Is it Long Beach?
I think, uh, Long Beach, it's not on my notes in here, but I believe there was, there was one that had three hundred feet, yeah. I just don't have it off the top of my head here.
So I, I think the way it's written, um, if we can go to the actual exhibit, which would be A eleven. On the stacking distance, it starts off at three hundred. However, under D one. The applicant can request the director consider a reduction in the stacking distance down to two hundred, but they'd have to provide a study. For it, right now, our current stacking distance is a hundred and sixty feet, and we found that to be inadequate, so. So it's kind of like, if they can meet it at three hundred, most of them are going to want to. Do that because they wanna have as much queuing lane onsite. However, if they're gonna argue that it's not. That, then they can go, I'm sorry, go less, uh, two twenty, and they could do that, but they have to, in a sense, prove up that. Their, their particular business isn't gonna cause uh more queuing than they have capacity for the site.
Do, do we have the information on the McDonald's that's just down the street from the Raising Canes? Behind the seven eleven there, what's their queuing?
Well, their, uh, their queuing would have to be at least one sixty currently.
Correct, but I mean, do we know what it is?
I don't think we have measurements for, I mean, it's in the, I'd have to go dig up their plans, but I'm pretty sure there's something when they did the Play Place. Edition, uh, where it has a queuing, but at a minimum, for new businesses, it'd have to be a hundred and sixty.
Okay, so let, let's say the, the uh. In-N-Out Burger that we talked, that uh Chair Rosari talked about, the parking area, if they decide that, well. At some point, they wanna add a, a Play Place. Uh, add that, you know, for some reason or another. How would that affect? Their drive-through? And I'm not talking about structurally placing a play, but assume that they wanna add that addition. An improvement or a modification to the building. So what would they have to do to maintain their drive-through? Or how would that affect the drive-through that they currently have?
Well, I mean, there would be a three hun-, so under this ETA, we would require a three hundred foot uh queuing lane. Unless they ask the director for a reduction, that could go down to two twenty, so if presumably if they had the room on their lot. To include a Play Place and meet all the, all the bulk requirements of that Play Place, in addition to. Meeting the requirements of a drive-through, then they would be permitted through a CUP process, but um, you know. We'd have to see exactly what they were submitted and see what their plans were, um, see what they had in mind for their. Play Place to, before we approved it or before we reviewed it.
The, the other thing to be mindful of is, if they're going to add square footage to the, the facility, they also have to accommodate onsite parking. Additional onsite parking for that. So it would be in a, uh, be a combination of things, it'd be both. What is the new parking requirement applied to it, that they're gonna require more onsite parking? And then a result of that is we'd be looking at what their current uh queue lane is, as far as where they're actually designated. And look at it within the context of if these requirements went forth to provide three hundred, if they're gonna request something less than that, they'd have to prove it up. But um, knowing the In-N-Outs. They may, one of the conditions of approval may be that they have a longer queue lane as a result of the impact, so. The CUP findings are very specific, it looks at what, when you're making a request, one of the things they look at is the impacts of the use and the use's expansion. Onto neighboring land uses, including those even on the same lot with other businesses, so it's, it's all inclusive.
So, uh, basically, if they wanted to go through a process like that, and like I said, let's. Presume for a second that the addition or the modification they wanna uh apply to the building. Is perfectly fine, and it meets all the requirements, that's gonna impact the drives, the drive-through. Queuing that they currently have. And if they don't meet the three hundred foot requirement, and. The two hundred and twenty foot requirement is not approved, then essentially they cannot have their improvement. Or if they want to, they lose their drive-through. But that would be the result.
There's a couple of scenarios. One is they don't get their CUP approved, they don't do the expansion. If they. And I can tell you right now, just from looking at that location, I, I don't think they even have a. Right now, they're far exceeding even two twenty. They're out in the street, in some instances, based on operational requirements. So one of the things that, that we would look at, and the reality of it is that. The conditionally permitted use process is really to evaluate whether the existing facility. And any change to that facility can be accommodated by the site. So I, I think you kinda gotta strip it back and say. It's not just the CUP to kinda check off the boxes. If, if what they're trying to do intensifying. The facility results in an adverse impact, and we make a finding as such, then it won't be approved. I mean, that's the intent of the CUP is. To confirm whether a use, whether existing or proposed, and it's a conditionally permitted process. That the resulting impact of that project will not have an adverse impact on the site or on adjacent land uses. If, if all of that holds true, then a CUP would be approved, but absent that, we're obligated in our review and ultimately at the commission. To determine, are they gonna create an adverse impact? Is it gonna create an issue with circulation? Is it gonna create an issue with life safety? Is it gonna create an impact where they can't meet the requirements of the code? And those are all reasons for denial of the CUP.
I think we should pass a CUP saying, if you wanna go eat an In-N-Out Burger, you need to apply for a CUP. So, I mean, it's, it's almost coming down to that, so.
One, one more question. Um, is there any drive-through right now? That meets the current proposed zone text amendment? That would meet the, that would meet this.
We haven't done that analysis to that detail um at this, at this time. Uh, but that's something that I could definitely research and, and come back to you on.
I mean, the only one I can think of is maybe the donut place in um, the Empire Center, maybe.
Krispy Kreme?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's actually a proposal for an Amy's uh restaurant with drive-through, where the old hometown buffet or the buffet was. And they would be designing it, uh, it looks like their numbers are one sixty plus, uh, as far as, you know, to basically get. Into that, but it requires, again, a reduction of the square footage of the existing building to accommodate the drive-through, and they have an existing conditional use permit, so.
So.
They're, they're already approved.
So we're setting this bar super high.
We, correct, I mean, uh, let's be quite clear, what, what's being proposed is to uh set. A bar so that we can, to the best of all the analysis that we've done, so that we can ensure that there's sufficient. Onsite queuing to accommodate the restaurants. And the area of concern that we're responding to is. Is uh restaurants that are residentially adjacent. Uh, many of those sites are not big enough or deep enough. To accommodate everything that's required for us to provide greater assurances that we're not gonna have these spillover effects that are being talked about. That is exactly what this is intending to do, is that the old permitted by right with some modifications hasn't worked. The models that are coming out as far as the types of restaurants are smaller footprints with larger demands for queuing. And that's what's being presented to you all is a set of regulations that would address that. And one of the ways of addressing is to prohibit any future expansion of that type of restaurant model along the commercial corridor. Within a hundred and fifty feet of residential.
Okay. Did you have one more question?
Question, um, how many cars make up three hundred feet? I guess the other way around.
It's about twenty.
Twenty cars?
Yes.
I know that.
Fifteen to twenty.
Parking spot, it's, I think it's like, they use four hundred and fifty square feet, uh, so it's.
About fifteen to twenty.
Fifty twenty, cool, thank you.
Alright, any more questions for staff? Seeing none, I now declare the public meeting closed. What is the planning board's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion. Okay.
I'd like to deliberate the matter a bit.
Well, we can do it either way. We can get a motion, a second deliberate, or we can deliberate, whatever the pleasure is.
I think we all have things to say.
Okay, so uh Mister Otakony, why don't you lead us off?
Well, I mean. I think this is being rushed. Uh, I don't, and, and the end result of the whole thing. As uh it became clear, is to apply so many restrictions that. There will not be another drive-through opening in the city of Burbank. Not only that. Apply so many restrictions that even an existing business that has a drive-through, that's actually my bigger concern. Within ninety days, uh, you lose that right, and if you're residentially adjacent, well, good luck. A business that may have been worth some, some money, well, some may argue, well, if it was worth some money, why would you close it down? But some businesses may be able to utilize that location more successfully than other businesses. So in that regard, someone who sees a potential and that would be able to utilize. Will pay in order to acquire the site, to develop or, or further open it, and. We will not have an empty lot for a while. Uh, whereas if you change, completely change the use, it, it takes so much more energy, so much more effort, so much more money. To try and make it fit this other use. Uh, all things are possible. But I think at the end of the day. As responsible individuals who are supposed to fairly assess and evaluate things. I've seen cities do a reaction, basically react to something instead of. Putting an effort, there's, there's some thought somewhere that says, you know what, we're gonna kill all drive-throughs in Burbank. And that's, that's where we're gonna head, then that's the path we're gonna go. And this is just, uh, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm gonna call it a. A quick way of doing that, and, and, and rushing to do that, and I don't know why. Uh, all citizens benefit from the tax revenues that are generated, all citizens benefit from. Uh, having a drive-through that's convenient and with the advent of. And with the advent of, like I said, the new technologies, there, and, and we shouldn't be able, we should, we should be able to come up with better solutions than just to try and add more code to the code or get rid of code to try and make the thing so restrictive that it makes it impossible. And that's what we've done to everything. That's what cities do to everything. Add code and more code, so you can't even build an apartment building. Add more code to more code, you can't even build another structure. So it's, 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 it's a never-ending cycle where we're our own worst enemies. Instead of trying to find creative solutions, what we do, let's restrict it. People complain, let's restrict it. And, and I'm not faulting the people for complaining, obviously they have legitimate complaints. But at the end of the day, there needs to be a better thought process that goes into the whole thing to make it viable, to make it workable. Uh, this is not the end-all of everything. Let, instead, instead of saying, well, let's sit down and give this serious consideration. Let's see, what are, what are some of the other solutions we can come up with? How about we create, uh, we have, we have all these people in the city who are technologically advanced. Why, why don't we create a little group that can go out and maybe talk to these, uh, uh, businesses out there and say, hey, you know what, there are all these technologies out there that we can help you out, give you resources. We need you to go out and check this out and we'll evaluate you in about six months and let's see if, if we've solved this problem. But that's not the route we take. We got code, we can change code, let's change code, make it more restrictive. Uh, I'm not able to support this because at least it requires a little bit more thought process than, than what we have here.
Mr. Monaco?
A property is legally non-conforming because it's non-conforming. That means that deliberations, thought has been made as to what that property should be doing in that location. And when a property changes, and when a business changes hand, it gives the city the right to peel it back and say, okay, we have a chance now of looking at this and saying, should we can keep it that way? Or since it no longer conforms, uh, 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 since now the, the area has changed, the demographic's changed, whatever, we're okay with that change. So again, I think it's a question of giving us options. What is being proposed on these changes gives this city the ability to not only meet the changing picture of what drive-in restaurants are, but I think it also gives us the opportunity to, again, step back and say, we don't want that right now. We are going to, we are, we, we will consider it, but now we have something on paper, and I may be wrong. I mean, tell me if I'm wrong here, but now we have something on paper that gives us more options. That we are meeting the changing economic, economic status of, of these restaurants. But I, I just feel that we're getting more options under these proposals, which is what I always like, options. And while I'm obviously very business-friendly and I want to see businesses succeed in the area, at the same time, I want to see us having the maximum amount of options to approve or disapprove a development. So, sorry, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, um, presentation that's been made here and the changes that are proposed.
Uh, Ms. Wick?
Thank you so much, Chair. Um, very respectfully, I disagree with my colleague, Mr. Otakanian, that I disagree with a couple of things. First and foremost, that this is rushed. Um, I did agree last meeting that this did seem rushed and that more noticing was required. And I think that they did that with the property owners and that they had more meetings. And also too, this, we're not the end-all be-all. This is coming back before council. I, I believe it was July 25th. So that does give the public a chance for even more input if needed. And I do think that this has been thought out as carefully as possible. And I too do not want Burbank to seem not friendly to business. However, to be perfectly blunt, we, we all know, I mean, it's kind of the elephant in the room and we've all said it. This is a reaction to Raising Canes. I mean, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Raising Canes. And, you know, what happened there is unfortunately history. I do not live in that neighborhood, I just want to state that, so I am not impacted by that. However, that particular restaurant did impact a neighborhood and has changed that neighborhood forever, regardless, you know, you can talk about the merits, you know, whichever way you can. And I think that we owe it to our residents so that we bring a higher standard to Burbank, and that does not happen again. Because I really do think that our residents, we, we're business-friendly, but our residents, they truly make our community and we don't want that to happen again. With that being said, I do think that the 90 days does allow a little bit of an outlet so that businesses can succeed, that they can sell their business with the condition that, hey, you have to open up a new business within 90 days. I think that that gives a little bit of an outlet and allows a property owner to sell their business. With that being said, I do support this ordinance. I think it's really important to our community and I'm very, very comfortable with the noticing that has been done. And also too, to the point where there have been, to my knowledge, businesses in Burbank that wanted to come in but do not have access to a drive-through and have still opened within the city. And so while a drive-through is, you know, the popular business model now, I do think that there are ways for businesses to open. You know, maybe they don't open residentially adjacent. Maybe they just have curbside pickup. I can think of another popular chicken res- restaurant that doesn't have a drive-through, but has curbside pickup, or they did, or whatever. But I do think there's a will that's, there's a way and that this is a very good balance of the equities between that. And so that's why I'm going to support this ordinance.
Still, Rick?
Um, we're here to serve at the pleasure of the residents and this is what the residents want. You guys did an excellent presentation. I read the report, there's a lot of good information in here and it's very detailed. I think that you guys did a great job. Um, we are here because of Raising Canes. An entire neighborhood was changed because of Raising Canes and I wouldn't like to see that in my neighborhood as a resident. So I fully support this amendment and recommend it to council.
Okay. Um, I'm never in favor of, uh, painting something with one broad brush. Um, I like to handle things case by case because every situation's different. Um, I personally think that we're swinging pretty hard in the other direction on this. The fact that there's probably not one drive-through in Burbank that would meet this code, not one, tells you, tells you something, um, that we're swinging pretty hard the other direction. Um, there are emerging opportunities with, uh, mobile ordering, which Chick-fil-A and Target and all these places are adopting because they can't get drive-throughs. Um, but I, I'm never, I'm never really in favor of painting, uh, whatever, you know, with the, with the code, just everything with one broad brush. Uh, every, every situation's going to be treated exactly the same when not every situation is the same. Every location is different. Um, I like to handle things on a case-by-case basis, so. Um, any other comments? Go ahead.
Um, as, as individuals who are given the task of reviewing and evaluating, um, I think there needs to be a balance. We, we can't discard what the residents are saying and we can, we cannot discard the effect that an action like this would take on the rest of the community. So we have one neighborhood, one street, let's say two blocks, and suddenly we are going to completely change the makeup of the entire city when it comes to drive-throughs. So th- that is the difficulty that I'm having. Where the, uh, because of one incident, now we are going to say, well, just because of this thing, everything else is going to have to, uh, change too. So tha- that is the problem where the solution to the problem is not a measured solution. It is a, it's like taking a hammer to a, I don't know, to a, to a big hammer to a small nail. So, uh, it's, it has no, my comments have no bearing on the preparation of this. My comments have no bearing on the residents who complained. Obviously, they have a right to complain and they should complain if there's an issue. My comments are towards the process, not only the process, but actually the path chosen to solve a problem. Because this is not a path to solve a problem. By creating, by, by saying, you know what, we're going to kill all drive-through businesses in Burbank. Uh, maybe that's an exaggeration, I, I have to give you that. But essentially, maybe in another 20 years, there's not going to be one drive-through in the city of Burbank. Possibly. Why are we going that, in that direction? So, uh, and as far as the, anyway, that's, that, that's the issue that I have here. Where more thought needs to go into solving the problem rather than, uh, you know, taking a, uh, taking a cannon to kill a, to, to, uh, to kill a fly. So, uh, that's, that's the problem I have with, with this, uh, uh, resolution, I mean, the zone tax amendment.
I just want to make one, one last, go ahead, Ms. Wick. I was just going to make one, one last comment. Um, I feel that I'm here not to represent just residents. I'm here to represent business owners, people who own property in this community and residents. And taking an opposing view to this doesn't mean that I don't care about the residents. I just think that there's, should be a different way of handling it and, and not just paint everything with one broad brush. So I just wanted to make that specific comment.
To your credit, Chair, I completely agree with you. We are here to serve everyone in the community. I would argue, and I just want to say that, I feel like I'm not going to change anybody's mind, but that's, I just wanted to be heard and known, that I do think having a, a study where they can bring the minimum stacking distance down to 220 or make it greater does give us a chance to review it on a case-by-case basis and allows us to serve both businesses and the neighborhood. So that's, that's where I feel like there is some give in it and that's my comfort level with it. But I understand that everybody has different comfort levels and that's what makes this commission great is because we all come from different backgrounds and we all have different opinions and dialogue is good, discussion's great.
Great. One more comment.
Um, I just, I also want to point out that the, um, business models have changed dramatically in a very short period of time. And I think it's very important for us to have flexibility. And that, yes, we represent both sides, our residents as well as the business owners of this town. But we're sort of like playing catch-up a little bit here. And we really need to give ourselves the ability to change with the times. And I think that's what we're, that's why I'm supporting this amendment. I think you have approached it from the point of view of stuff happens, stuff changes. And we have to be in a position to address that. That's it.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion?
Good?
Okay. I'd like, uh, motion to adopt a resolution of the Planning Committee, Commission of the City of Burbank, recommending the city council adopt an ordinance of the city council, of the city of Burbank amending Title 10, Chapter 1 zoning of the Burbank Municipal Code to update the development standards for the conversion of existing businesses with drive-throughs. The prohibition of residential adjacent restaurants with drive-through, requirement to obtain a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through establishment, changes, changes to the minimum stacking distance requirements and limitation of hours of operation for establishments with a drive-through.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion or comments?
I'll also just say really quick, I was looking in the staff report and the last time the stacking was updated was 1996. And so to your, we can agree, we can change with the times. And if 20 years from now, my God, we don't own cars anymore, then who knows? Maybe we'll all be back here.
A 1969 Chrysler Newport is 19 feet long. I just thought you'd like to know that.
Hundred percent agree.
Any other comments? Go ahead, thank you.
Chair Rosari?
No.
Vice Chair Otakanian?
No.
Commissioner Monaco?
Yes.
Commissioner Elrich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Reports, uh, there are no port, reports on tonight's agenda. Approval of the minutes, now is the time for the approval of the minutes from May 8th, 2023, planning, uh, board meeting. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes? If not, if I can get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we had aye, five ayes, thank you. Uh, now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on a future agenda. Do we have any, uh, board members that'd like to introduce?
Chair Rosari, I'm sorry, just, I want to clarify something. There, there may have been an error in your script.
There was a public comment.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So we, we should, uh, before you make a, any action, why don't we?
Yeah.
Just read that out?
I was looking for, I looked, I was looking and looking and I was.
I was, we were just testing you, but I knew, I knew your own point. Um, but, but we do want to have that opportunity.
So now is the time for public comment. If anyone's here for public comment or wants to call in regarding public comment, uh, we are here.
I can, um, read it out for you, just, uh, if you, if you want. The, the public who wishes to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that want to participate in general comments, you can also call in, uh, to the phone number, 818-238-3335. Once again, phone number is 818-238-3335, uh, to, um, speak to the commission and/or to, uh, voice any comments that you may have. Uh, and the phone lines are open. So please bear with us as we take this time, a couple of minutes just to see if we get any callers. Uh, and for callers, remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and to take your phone off speaker when you deliver your public comment. And if, uh, the chair would entertain just waiting a minute?
Yes, sir.
To see if we get any calls. Uh, there is a member of the audience, I'm not sure if, uh, they want to speak during general comments?
He already did, he already did. You want to double dip?
Yeah, interrupted enough.
Okay, all right.
So while, while we're waiting, we're not having a, so our next board meeting's on the 12th, okay. Nothing?
No callers.
Okay, we're closing the public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, one caller.
Whoa, all right. Great.
Deborah, you are now live with the planning board.
Um, hi. Uh, I would like to suggest that when planning is going on for apartment buildings and multiple use-type things, that the distance to grocery stores are considered and multiple-use type things, that the distance to grocery stores are considered because it looks like we want to be using less cars. And, you know, like if daycare centers are near schools, if grocery stores are near apartment buildings, then people aren't going to have to be using their cars so much. It's just something that I'd like the city to consider when they're doing major planning. Thank you.
Market downtown, we need a market downtown. Uh, any other public comment? Seeing none? Ma'am? No? Okay. Public comment period closed. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Planning Board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to put it on a future item. Do we have any items to introduce? Seeing none. City Planner comments?
Just wanted to update you all. Believe, at this point, do we have anything agendas for? We we don't have anything yet agendas for the meeting, but if we do, we'll let you know. Or we'll send you a notification of cancellation. Tomorrow night at the council meeting, there'll be discussion regarding AB 2011 standards that you all discussed. So we've conveyed the feedback we received from the commission as well as the public. We had a community meeting, so just wanted to inform you. That's going to be before the council tomorrow night, as well as subemergency ordinances that deal with procedures that apply to both SB 35 and AB 2011 projects. So just to keep you informed, those things, AB 2011, of course, came to you as a zone tax amendment. The other one was just a procedural requirement or modification. So that one didn't come to you in case you, you see it and you're wondering, it's an amendment to the code, but it didn't come to the commission, didn't have to. But I just wanted to keep you informed of that, because those projects have potential impacts. And I say that only because the person that talked on the phone talked about land use and kind of planning for things so that we have amenities within walking distance of mixed-use projects and reduce the vehicle miles traveled. So just so that's on your radar, so just wanted to keep you up to date.
Okay. So before I I read the adjournment, does the city attorney like to talk about his recent acquisition?
I think you could relate to this, Chair Rizzotti, right?
I certainly can.
Yeah, I have our first, our first child, baby boy, almost four months old, named Dominic. Yeah, he's doing really well. He was five weeks early, though, so it was quite scary, actually.
Oh, wow.
He was in NICU for for 12 days, but he's healthy and he's he's big now, and, you know, everything's good. That smile can change a lot of things, too. Even even on two hours of sleep, that one smile can make a difference.
I've got four of them.
Well, that's, that's really wonderful. Congratulations. I didn't know until I heard, and I was just keeping some good thoughts for you, so really, I'm just very happy for you.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate it.
God bless.
Thank you.
We now adjourn to the Planning Commission meeting on Monday, June 12, 2023, at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held in person in the council chambers at 275 East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person or to view the meeting online or on television. The public will be able to provide public comment in the following ways, in person at the meeting or by e-comment on the city's webpage at www.burbankca.gov/ecomments, or by calling directly to the Planning Board, 818-238-3335. Thank you, everyone, for participating. Have a good night.